I don't remember that one.
Easy.
You ready?
Work it.
All right.
Did you like that person?
All right, we'll call the meeting to order if we can stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we can have the roll call.
Yoder?
Here.
Noonan?
Here.
Black is absent with prior notice. Lautner? McDonald?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Nixon?
Here.
Trumble?
Here.
Rush?
Here.
Wow, excellent, we got a full board here, so I just want to welcome Mr. McDonald, Mr. Rush here. Welcome to the board. I know Mr. McDonald, you've served on here before, but Rush will be diving right in and it'll be a fun ride, so appreciate having me on board.
Thanks.
Next up, we have the consideration of the agenda. Is there any additions or deletions of the agenda that anyone would like to add?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
All right. All right, Mr. Yoder made the motion, Mr. Miller supported. Any further discussion? All right, not? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Are we all set over there? Want us to hang on or keep rolling?
If you want to continue, I will run back to my office and check up in there.
Okay. All right. All right, next up, we have conflict of interest. Is there any member that has a conflict of interest with any of the items on the agenda here? All right. If not, we'll move on to our annual organization items, which would be election of officers. As you can see, the 2020 officers, 2022 officers are, I guess we'll take, we can either, yeah, do a full motion with everybody, or if there's any changes, I guess I'll accept any nominations at this point.
I would move that we instate all of the former officers from 2022. I think your chairmanship has been very helpful to us as a committee, and I appreciate the way you run meetings. And I know that Casey has stepped in from time to time ably, and we never really used Mr. Black, but nevertheless, that would be my motion that we reelect the three members who served as our officers last year.
I second.
All right.
Question regarding that, can we nominate Mr. Black in his absence?
Sure can.
I know we want to, and I'm not suggesting we don't want to, whether it's proper.
Yeah, I guess somebody should have, would have been, I guess, ideal to check priorly if he's willing to do that. I know last year, we did the same thing. He wasn't present and we did it. He was okay with it, so.
Then let's do what he gives.
So, I just, that's just remember, I guess, my member service. Any other questions on the nomination? All right. We have Mr. Nixon made the nomination to appoint all the previous officers for the 2022, 2023 session as well. Mr. Trumble supports. Any further discussion? All right, not? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, guys. Appreciate the trust you have me, so.
Thank you for willing to serve. You too, Casey.
All right, next up, we have our annual review of the bylaws. Hopefully, everybody had a chance, and I guess just for the new members on here, I recommend, like, I know staff sends out the agenda, you know, at least a couple days before the meeting, how to recommend everybody reviews everything. That way, we can move through the agenda swiftly, and we just take comments here at the meeting type of thing. So, I don't know if anybody had any questions on the bylaws. I know they were in the package. I see the only red line item there is in the end, the date change. Is there anything else, I guess, that members feel like needs to be discussed, or addressed, or questions, or anything? Mr. Miller, I'll start with you. Have you got any questions?
No, I'm fine with it as it stands.
Mr. Yoder?
I'm saying.
Mr. Trumble?
No concerns.
All right, Mr. Nixon?
No concerns.
Mr. McDonald? Will you, Mr. Rush?
No.
All good? All right. Does staff have any corrections, or other than just what's noted in there, or no? Okay, just the date changes there, all right. All right, if not, I guess we'll move on with accepting them as amended with the date change there at the end. If somebody's willing to make a motion.
Move to approve the bylaws as amended.
All right.
Support.
All right. Mr. Yoder made the motion, Mr. Nixon supported. Any further discussion on the bylaws? All right, if not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We all good staff to keep going, or?
Yes, I just don't have sound.
Oh.
Watch yourself in case this feels.
Can you hear us? Like we?
Go ahead, again, Steve.
Can you hear that? No, I go this time, so, all right. It's great to have technology, but sometimes you have glitches and that creates a big mess. Do you hear anything now? That's not right.
I'm gonna go down and check.
All right, you have, is it, it's being, is it being streamlined, or is it just the zoom? Or is everything just being recorded and being able to watch?
Being recorded and then we're trying to stream it live.
A little bit of glitch there. Do we keep going, or?
Well, what's next?
We can, we can move on to item number three, which is the 2023 meeting schedule and annual session meeting dates. For those new on the committee here, annual planning session is a once-a-year training that we offer to either board members or appointed members within township in county. As far as the training session goes in that sense, usually, we take good census here for what type of training we want to do. So, it looks like that date is temporarily set for that time, so. Does anybody have any objections, or corrections, or questions, I guess, to the proposed meeting dates for this year?
I have a question. Will the planning session start at the same time? Would we expect to be here at 5:30?
That varies.
That depends.
Usually, we have started it at 6:30. Kind of a meet and greet, and then the session at 7:00.
Okay.
And that has worked out well in the past.
Okay, just want to make sure I'm here.
Okay, and just a reminder to everyone, if you can make sure you speak in your microphone so that anyone listening can hear everything being said here. Thanks.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions regarding the proposed meeting dates?
So, December 26th, maybe seems like maybe a difficult one.
Okay. I'm assuming that's the fourth Tuesday of the month, I'm assuming, correct?
Yes, so, I would suggest that we change that. We can move it to the third Tuesday. The only difficulty with that is the county board also meets that night at 7:00, so we would not be able to get into this room. We'd have to go downstairs. If you want, we can move it to that, is that the 19th then, I think? And of course, sometimes later in the year, there's not anything that needs to be acted on, so the meeting gets canceled anyway. But if you want, we can move that to the 19th. Let's have a check that date.
Thinking if we change the date now, then we're changing the date of when they have to submit, and maybe we can avoid conflicts.
Okay, yep.
I move to approve the 2023 meeting schedule as amended.
All right, is there support?
Support.
All right, Mr. Noonan made the motion, Mr. Trumble supported, to approve the 2023 meeting schedule as amended. Is there any further discussion on this? All right, if not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, next up, we have committee appointments. I will appoint Mr. Noonan back to Parks and Rec. If he so desires to continue in that role. I know staff had one note as far as any housing action committee, members that want to be appointed to that. I believe you had one member that wanted to be appointed to that as well, or?
Yes, Commissioner Gwen Algar has expressed interest in being on the Housing Action Committee as well. As you know, that's a subcommittee of this group, so anything they do would be a recommendation either to you or up to the county board. They can't take any action themselves. So, that body has been pretty open as far as membership. We started with quite a few members, and it's kind of gone down to the core group, I'll call them, that have been very active since the beginning, and we've had a few others that have come in to the group along the way. And of course, anyone here that wants to be on the Housing Action Committee could also put their name forward if they would like to be on that. We're meeting every other month now. So, we wouldn't show March. That would mean three county commissioners are on that committee. I don't think that's an issue. Like I said, they're recommendation only. They don't take any action. They would send it through you or up to the county board for, you know, any recommendations they might have on policies or projects and so forth.
Right. I guess, is there any members on here that want to be on that committee as well, or? Do we just want to appoint Commissioner Algar? Sounds like everybody's pretty quiet, so it's like we're all good. So, do you need a motion on that, or do I just make that appointment myself, I guess?
Why don't you go ahead to motion, because we have it in the record.
All right, is there a motion to appoint Commissioner Algar to the Housing Action Committee?
I shall move.
All right, is there support, Mr. Black, or not Mr. Black, but Mr. Miller? Motion made by Mr. Noonan, supported by Mr. Miller, to appoint Commissioner Algar to Housing Action Committee. Any further discussion on that? All right, if not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Carry it. Perfect, next up, we have public comment. Able to speak when we come to an action item. Next up, we have staff comments.
Two items for you. First, in front of you is a map training brochure, copy for you, and there are several different training sessions. The dates and the locations are on the back. Some of them are virtual. If you are interested in attending any of these, don't sign up yourself, contact staff, and we will get you signed up and pay whatever the fee is. And for any of them that are travel-related, you can go ahead and submit travel reimbursement for that as well for attending a session like one of them is in Frankenmuth, for instance. So, that's for your reference. New members are required by the bylaws to do one type of a training in their first year, and then all members are recommended to continue doing some type of training while they're on the commission. And then the other thing I just wanted to update you on is, to last meeting, you reviewed the Benzonia and Platt Townships Master Plan, and we submitted back the staff report. We actually took their document and marked it up. There was a lot of changes to be made, a lot of grammatical errors and formatting and so forth. And so, I got a message back from Sarah Kirk from SRP Design Studio, who's working on it with these two communities. She thanked us for a very thorough review. She said another proofread ahead of the draft would have been great to have. Thanks again for catching the grammar errors. I'm not used to getting much response on these drafts, so it's much appreciated. And then, they are holding their public hearing on the final on February 2nd. We got the notice on that. So, good feedback, I think, from them.
All right, any questions for staff? All right. Yeah, and like staff said, the training's here. If you just let staff know, and they'll get you all set on that. And yeah, for the two new members, I recommend, you know, it gets in our bylaws to do at least one of these, so just look it over and let staff know what you want to do, and look in there.
I'm currently doing the four-week housing one, so.
Oh, okay. Awesome. Awesome. All right, next up, we have the meeting minutes from September the 27th. Wow, that seems like a long time ago.
It was.
Any questions on those minutes?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
Support.
All right, motion made by Mr. Noonan, supported by Mrs. Trumble, to approve the September 27th, 2022 meeting minutes as presented. Any further discussion? All right, if not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, next up, we're into new business, onto Leland Township Rezone Agricultural R1, and we'll go on with the staff report to begin on this one.
Okay. This is a request that was on the agenda for the December meeting, and as you know, we had a couple things come up with members at last minute that couldn't be avoided, so we didn't end up with quorum that night, and the township has requested that it be reviewed by you at your meeting tonight. So, that's why you're getting this request in, even though the statute says that we respond within 30 days. The township has requested that you review this. So, this is a request from an applicant, the Ammon Group LLC out of Naperville, Illinois. The owner is Christopher Ammon, and they're asking for a rezoning request in Leland Township for just under 28 acres from agricultural to residential one. The property is located on the west side of North Old Farm Road and runs along Lake Michigan ridgeline along the west side of the parcel, excuse me, the Lake Michigan ridgeline runs along the west side of the parcel. The property to the north and to the east is vacant and zoned agricultural. To the west, of course, is Lake Michigan, and the south is some residential, single-family dwellings, orchard, and zoning is residential one, residential conservation, and agricultural. And I'm just going through this. It's in your packet. I don't have the page numbers on here, so hopefully, you follow along with me, or if you have it in front of you. The future land use map for Leland Township calls for this area for residential conservation, and in the plan, that states that it is one dwelling unit per 10 acres for rural lands that are not suitable for agricultural or horticultural production on a large scale. And then, they also point out low-density residential, which is one dwelling unit per acres, and this is a category that's located remotely from urban and other intense uses. Most of the mainland shoreline perimeter areas included in this category, and uses are single-family residences and appropriate accessory uses. Our county general plan, the future land use map, notes that there's northern hardwoods in the area and agricultural lands, but it does not specifically identify any community types or densities for the area. The township held a public hearing on August 25th, which was adjourned to September 8th, and then on October 13th. On October 11th, the township received a written offer of conditions and republished the public hearing notice for November 10th, so then that public hearing went to November 10th. Most of the public comment that had been received regarding this rezoning request was in opposition to the rezoning. At the November 10th meeting, the commission reviewed the findings of fact and then made a recommendation to approve the application submitted by Chris Ammon to rezon this property, subject to the voluntary conditions submitted by the applicant, including the voluntary amendments to the conditions discussed that night. There were some minor corrections to those conditions, and that was based upon the rezoning criteria, findings of fact, and considering the application of public hearing. And I'll get into conditional rezoning a little bit later here. That motion passed at the Township Planning Commission on a vote of five to one. There was one member that voted against it, and that was the person that asked for a clean copy of the voluntary conditions before voting on it. As some history in this area, in 2004, there were two rezoning requests reviewed by the County Planning Commission for property directly to the south of the subject parcel. One was PC 10, and the other one was PC 11 in 2004. PC 10 was from Clifford Hale to rezon 9.6 acres of land with an existing house from the Ag District to the Residential One, and due to the steep slopes and soils unsuitable for the development, it was noted only one additional split could be made for this parcel. The rezoning would remove that non-conforming status because the parcel was less than 10 acres in size and allow the applicant to make one additional parcel split, and the parcel was rezoned by the township. And then, PC 11 was a request from Barbara Urin to rezon 10.4 acres of land with one existing house from Ag to residential conservation. She had originally requested rezoning to Residential One, later changed it to residential conservation. At that time in 2004, that had the same, that district's residential conservation had the same minimum lot size as the Ag District, but allowed the option of plant site option so that you could increase the density. So, the Urin parcel also included seven acres to the immediate north that was rezoned in 2000 and split off from the parent parcel. So, the Urin parcel was approved by the Township Board as well for rezoning in 2004. Then we get down to staff analysis and finding, and we pointed out that the Leland Township zoning map, parcels directly to the south is parcel or zone residential one, residential conservation. There's residential development along the shoreline, and bluff and agricultural use is located to the east. Rezoning would be consistent with the residential development along the shoreline. We pointed out the master plan designates this entire shoreline area as residential conservation with a 10-acre minimum lot size. There's also several other parcels along the shoreline area designated residential conservation, and they're less than 10 acres in size. We've noted that the existing zone is reasonable, and one of the questions we always ask is, do current regulations leave the applicant without economically beneficial or productive options? And the answer is no. The applicant can use the property as currently zoned. There's a 10-acre minimum lot size in the Ag District, which would allow the applicant to develop two homes on two separate parcels. The applicant purchased this property March 9th of 2022. In August was when the township was holding the public hearing, so from the time that the applicant purchased it until August, we're assuming that they knew what the zoning was, and they knew what was allowed on that parcel. During the public hearings that were held, there were a lot of concerns raised regarding the private road used to access the subject parcel, stormwater runoff, potential development density, and the shoreline bluff. It was October 11th when the township then received a list of voluntary conditions for this parcel. One of the things we wanted to point out in the staff report, because there seemed to be a lot of discussion on the density and how many splits there'd be, is that you have to look at what's allowed in the current use and what's allowed if you rezon it to a different district, regardless of what the applicant's telling you. Especially in this case, the applicant didn't bring forward any conditions saying they would limit the use to a certain use. So, in the current Ag District, we've pointed out here, you can do one single-family dwelling per 10-acre parcel, you can do agricultural activities. There are also some permitted accessory uses, which include home occupations and businesses, bed and breakfast operations, and so forth. Under the new district, it's single-family detached dwelling with a two-acre minimum size in that R1 district. Home occupations, home business, bed and breakfast, maximum of three rental rooms, guest house, planned unit development, and passive recreational facilities. In the staff report, we've included language on conditional rezoning. So, conditional rezoning is where an owner of the land brings forth conditions to that rezoning request for the township to consider. The township is not to offer, or not to suggest conditions, or even try to barter back and forth or change the conditions. They have to be offered and either accepted or denied, and that's up to the applicant. And then, there is language in the township zoning ordinance on what that process is like and how that occurs if it is rezoned, that there is an actual document that gets signed and taken care of and so forth, so everyone knows that this is rezoned, but here's the conditions on the property. Usually, we see conditional rezonings where someone is proposing a certain use. So, for instance, in a business district, there may be a lot of uses, but they're only interested in doing one type of a use, like an ice cream store, so they'll ask for the rezoning, but say, my condition is I'm only gonna use, I'm only gonna do an ice cream store on there. So, that kind of alleviates people's fears that, well, you're gonna bring a gas station and, you know, office buildings, or whatever else, is they limit it to, this is the only thing that I want. That didn't happen in this particular case. Article 21 of the Township Zoning Ordinance does spell out the requirements for the conditional rezoning. It includes the intent, the application of the offer of conditions, the approval, the time period, and so forth. And this condition runs with the land, and the township has the right to approve or deny a conditional rezoning request. So, we'll get down to the conditions. The applicant offered six conditions. The first one was place all the portion of the parcel, about 18 acres, lakeward of the steep slope ridgeline and a conservation easement. That would be held by the Leland Conservancy, Leland Township, or another qualified third party. The conservation easement would be tailored to allow for a future walkway, stairway access, lakeward of the ridgeline for pedestrian shoreline access. Option two, excuse me, condition two, no more than four total lot splits to be applied to the parcel. Condition three, compliance with the Leland Township Private Road Ordinance to the four new lots. Condition four, any and all stormwater generated from the site will be retained and disposed of on-site. Condition five, compliance with all other relevant and applicable agency permits and requirements of township, county, and state regulations. And then, the last one is provide proof of State of Michigan Eagle finding that the hazardous erosion line is lakeward of the prominent ridgeline, and thereby Eagle has no jurisdiction other than at the lakeshore. So, staff comments on these. Some of these are conditions appear to be requirements. They would already have to follow for local interstate reviews approvals for developments. So, if it is already a requirement that an applicant slash developer would have to comply with, there's no reason to include it as an offer or a condition. For instance, it could be any parcel of land. If you have to go through the county's stormwater erosion control, you have to do it. Whether or not you offer it as a condition, you're gonna have to do it if it applies to your parcel. So, with regard to number one, we've stated that was the one that they would put everything in conservation easement. We said, would the pedestrian access be for the public? If it's only for the property owners, what benefit does it serve the township to accept this condition? And of course, what does the township have to do then? Who's putting in the stairway? And is the township liable for anything regarding that conservation easement and that access? Does the township want to take the responsibility of that easement on a private piece of property? If there's no access to the shore due to the steep slopes in the ridgeline, and that portion of the property is not buildable, what benefit is the conservation easement for? Why do you need to put it in a conservation easement if you can't use it, if it's steep and you can't get to the water? If it will be used by the public as an access to the shoreline, then will there be increased traffic to get to that access site, and where are those vehicles parking? Condition number two is the one that we pointed out, we feel is the main condition, is that's where the applicant has offered a maximum of four parcels. So, all of these other things, really, in our viewpoint, they're already going to apply, or with the case of the conservation easement, you might not need it anyway, and does the township even want that? So, really, you get down to, they've offered four total splits on that parcel. We pointed out that the applicant purchased this property and knew what, or should have known, what was allowed by the zoning, and it's stated in some of the documentation that we received from the township that the applicant wanted to have additional parcels due to the initial cost of the property, which was over $1 million. And in our staff report, we pointed out that the last few years have seen a dramatic increase in prices of land around here. People have bought sight unseen, they've bought with no inspections, they've paid higher than an asking price. So, you know, there are other parcels in this area that are at least 10 acres in size. Will the township see the same kind of request to condition it and split that down into smaller parcels? And then, finally, we wanted to point out that the concerns with the road and the road improvements, that need, those need to be addressed by the property owners that have legal access along with any township requirements. And then, we also pointed out that while the current conditions don't leave the And then we also pointed out that while the current conditions don't leave the applicant without options, they can do a split and have two parcels, 10 acres in size. There are areas along the shoreline that are steep. They're most likely not gonna be used for any of the uses in the Ag District except single-family homes. And many of the parcels along the shoreline are already less than 10 acres in size but zoned for agricultural. So perhaps the township should take a look at the zoning along that whole shoreline. Does it make sense to keep these properties in Ag? Is there another district that could be considered? There are parcels greater than 10 acres in size along the shoreline, as well as parcels around two acres or so in size. Perhaps a different minimum lot size would work better along this area. And also, if the plan site option and zoning ordinance is not really being used anymore, should that be reconsidered?
All right, thank you. Wow, thorough review. This is awesome. All right, now we'll go on to member comments, I guess. So Mr. Rush, is there anything you had to watch your eye, or anything you want to comment on?
I know the parcel. I've been to it. Basically, yeah, the 50, 60% of it, lakeside is, you know. So that cuts it down already. So giving four splits then basically puts, even though you're granting the splits, that puts it all in a small portion of the parcel. I understand his reasoning for asking for four, but, but I don't really have a problem with the rezoning of it because it is not agricultural property and, maybe three would be better, I guess, in my opinion.
Mr. Miller?
It seems like if you put a portion of it into a conservancy and you didn't have, and you'd have to get down a private road to get to any place to get to it, it doesn't make sense. That people, the other individuals who support that private road are going to be penalized for something that they don't have a voice in. And it'd be hard put to support a change with the idea that you, it was the way it was, you zoned the way it's current state when they made the purchase.
All right, Mr. Noonan?
The only concern I have is with the conservation easement. There's no guarantee that the conservancy wants the conservation easement as well. You know, we've gone through this with some of our property, and they may look at it and say, man, there's nothing in it for everybody else, it's too small, we don't want to do it. So there's no guarantee that you're gonna get that conservation easement either. And to have that built into your plan, I don't think is fair to everyone else or really can be built into the plan because you can't guarantee that they want it. My biggest concern.
Mr. Trumbull?
I agree with Mr. Rush in that. I don't really have any concerns with the new zoning because I too agree that that is not an agricultural site. So that would be what I would check.
Nixon?
There's some of my comments, and we've heard also from the applicant, but I think the property itself, looking in the master plan, and you alluded it in your thorough analysis once again, for the master plan speaks of this area, at least the shoreline area, all becoming residential or R1, which to me makes a great deal of sense when you look at that whole topography out there. You know, I recognize with respect that the gentleman who purchases property obviously wanted to turn this property over rather quickly, and so it's, it's going to be the magic of the township, I think, to make that determination as to whether that's an appropriate motivation for them to change the zoning on this or not. But I am interested in what Mr. Patmore may add to, to this discussion as well.
All right. Mr. Dowell?
I wonder if I could ask Steph regarding the article from, or the letter from Marcia Buehler regarding Article 13? Did you get much of a chance to look into that?
That correspondence was sent to all the planning commission members, and I'm not sure if I have it right here.
I guess my question is, are there other alternatives to residential? And she seems to imply that there, there are.
I would share that concern, Mr. Chairman. In fact, I'm hoping Mr. Patmore will address that. Ms. Buehler was in our audience at our December meeting, not here tonight, but I'm curious to know what impact her, her comments have at all with this, with this request.
All right, it's time, Mr. Patmore, you want to come up and answer the questions, I guess, or give your, do a few comments or statements or whatever?
I'll make a couple of comments first. This was a tough one for a planning commission. I'm just going, I help the planning commission, I don't have, I'm not the applicant, I'm just for the township. The planning commission spent a lot of time on this, and better parts of three meetings and all the time in between, and they received some conflicting information from all different sides on this thing. I think they did a good job. They went back and forth, they looked at the options and the alternatives either way, and they disseminated the conflicting information. And actually, it could have, I would have defended it either way. Whatever decision they made either way was defensible. Talking about Article 13, so they're in, and then that's part of the reason the planning commission made their decision. Under agricultural, if you go on Article 13's open space residential development, essentially a clustering. Under that section, with it being zoned agricultural, they still could have got four lots, but clustered with open space, dedicated open space. But it wasn't in the configuration that they, the property owner wanted, therefore they were asked to, because we got one. So part of the planning commission's decision was, you could do four lots under Ag, you could do four lots under R1. And although it didn't show up in our, in our staff report, it should have, but our definition of agricultural property is being 65% tillable, and I think I agree with everybody that that's not agricultural property. On Trudy's comments, I want to say that we're working on a master plan right now as we speak for the township, and they directed us, staff and consultant, to look at a district called Lake Michigan Shoreline District, which would encompass these areas. And I don't know what the density would be, that's further down the road, but it's probably not going to be Ag or R1 or RC forever. So again, the planning commission went through all of it, all the findings of fact. They thought, I think in conclusion, they thought with the conditions of four lots, R1, when you can do four lots agricultural, and they thought that these conditions made it a better possibility. And on your comments, Tom, the, I, I agree with the letter that, the analysis that they could have done, they could have done four lots with the open space residential development. I don't agree with the conclusion of that entirely with the conclusion of that letter that it could have been done with the configuration that they wanted, which was in your packet. They wanted two 10-acre lots and two smaller lots. I don't think that's clustering. So, and we, we might be arguing amongst ourselves at the township, what's clustering and what's not clustering, but when it came down to the planning commission, they thought four lots, Ag, four lots, R1, were limited. The road issue and the bluff issue will get handled internally during the permitting and site plan or reprocess. We have a private road ordinance that will kick in. Like Trudy said, it's gonna kick in whether the rezoning happens or not, our road process. I guess, any other questions? I'm wrangling.
Any other questions from the members here?
It's just a matter then of the permitted uses under R1 versus Ag, correct? From what you're saying, Steve, is that because they could get the four lots either way, but...
Right. I don't think there's anything that came up during the discussion that the planning commission was concerned about, that they would do. In fact, it was pointed out in Marcia's letter that they had indicated in their application that they wanted to have the two smaller lots be minimal. Well, there's a lot of agricultural things you can't do in R1, so. So there's both ways, there's things you can do in the Ag District that you can do in R1, and there's a few things you can do in R1. And I don't see anybody putting an adult pair home at the end of a farm road, but...
The thing that they were offering relative to the conservancy is that, if it's rezoned and they've offered that, does that become, how does that impact any kind of decision if that doesn't go through?
You mean at the, you know, there's different, the township could have them record an easement on, simply, the township could do the monitor of it. I mean, they wouldn't hold it, but they would, there's different ways you can convey an easement on development rights on your property, on a portion of your property. And they could do that without the conservancy. I don't think the conservancy's gonna want it either.
And I'm not sure that the conservancy would want to maintain any steps down to the lake.
Well, the steps would be for their personal, they, I think the reason they mentioned the steps is because they said, well, we're gonna not develop this except for steps for our use, or they would share the use for their, they want to have steps down to the water. But they want to make sure if they did an easement, that we're gonna, that that is gonna be allowable. So it wasn't for the public, it's not, the fact that it would be a, I mean, we had a guy up the road who pretty much the same thing, and he is dedicated, the open space is dedicated to the owners of the, other owners of the property, not the public. So I think there's a way, if the township board approves this rezoning, then the attorneys will work on the conditions and how to convey them.
So you're saying there really isn't any public access in any of this proposal?
No, I, no, it wasn't offered.
All right, Steph?
It, it just seems like it would have been an easier condition to say, we won't build on this area here, except to put in our steps to the beach, than to get tied into a whole legal conservation easement that you can't build on there anyway.
I think when the attorneys get it, they will try to some provide it for that. Yeah, we think that they agreed to, I mean, they could still, when they get to the township board level, work on amendment of those conditions.
Steve, I just wanted to, I could reply to Tom McDonald's question on that correspondence. So we included all the correspondence that we received. That wasn't the request, that was before us. That was a suggestion of maybe doing it a different way, but that was the request before us, so we didn't comment on that. If the township board doesn't agree to this and turns it down, then the applicant could look at something else.
Just as an interest, can you kind of characterize the differences between what the applicant was looking for in their property? Those, what you said, four, four lots could have been under R1 or Ag. What were they specifically looking for that made it better for them in terms of the four lots?
I can't really speak for them, but Article 13 in our ordinance is a clustering, so they would have created four smaller lots on less than 50% of the property. 50% is down in the open space. According to their application, they wanted, the guy that was building house wanted to have 10 acres. I don't know why that was, it was pushed to us that strongly. I don't know his motivation, but he did, they submitted that application, and again, by the township looked at it, four here, four there, three here.
Okay. Just interest.
Yeah, but I don't know their motivation behind 10 acres rather than small.
If it was a smaller lots in some common area, would that have tax implications that might have been a driver?
I would, yeah, I'd guess yes.
Entitling.
All right, any other questions from Mr. Patmore here, or Steph?
Basically, they were all their comments and their report, and all the township boards who do this again, that's not, we're done. Thank you.
All right, if there's no further comments, I guess I need a motion to forward this on to the Lelandau Township Board.
So moved.
Support it. All right. Motion made by Mr. Noonan and supported by Mr. Nixon to forward Lelandau Township rezoning agricultural to R1, along with staff mission comments on the township board. Any further discussion on that? All right, if not, all those in favor signify as a nay.
All right.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Patmore.
See you, Steve.
Have a good day.
Have a good night.
See you in the morning.
All right, next up, we have Elmwood Township. This is a text amendment. We'll start with the staff at one on this as well.
This is a request from Elmwood Township that we received on December 28th. The last day to review under the 30-day review period is January 27th. And the requested action is to review and comment on the proposed amendments to the Elmwood Township zoning ordinance. Moving down to Section 3, we've noted the Elmwood Township master plan does not specifically address this amendment, and neither does the Lelandau general plan. A public hearing was held on December 13th, at which time no public comments were received. Following the public hearing, the Township Planning Commission passed the following motion to send the proposed amendment to the county for review. Section 4, the analysis, we've answered questions regarding compatibility and issues of greater concern. Move on to the next page. Section 5, staff comments. The proposed amendment will add the following definition to Section 2.2 definitions. Frontage, with regard to a lot, the length of a lot line directly abutting a street or right-of-way, providing legal access to a lot, typically the front lot line. And add the following sentence to the definition, nonconforming parcel. Evidence of legal access to any nonconforming parcel shall be provided prior to issuance of any land use permit for development. The current Section 3.5, one dwelling per lot, you can, we've shown what that currently reads. In the proposed amendment, this will read as follows. In any zoning district, no more than one dwelling shall be permitted per lot or parcel, unless two family or multiple family dwellings are specifically permitted under this ordinance in a given zoning district. The proposed amendment will add the following sentence to Section 3.12, the single-family dwelling requirements. Prior to the dwelling being occupied, the applicant shall obtain a certificate of occupancy from the county. It will also add Section 3.13 dwellings, the following sentence on the top of the next page. Unless allowed under any other applicable provisions of this ordinance, a tent, camper, recreational vehicle, or similar, shall not be used as or likely dwelling. In doing so, shall be deemed a violation of this ordinance. Staff questions if kids can sleep in a tent or camper in the backyard without a permit? Can visiting relatives stay in a camper in the yard or driveway without a permit? Now, the proposed amendment will amend Section 5.6, table of dimensional requirements, as you can see there. It will also amend the footnotes to the table. It will also amend the footnotes to the table, and will add footnote G, and you can see if we've concluded that there. Staff notes that the current zoning ordinance shows something different for note G under the footnotes to the table. We question, will this be replaced with proposed amendment, or this is a new footnote and should be letter H? The proposed amendment will add R1 to Section 5.7, accessory buildings and decks, under the following. Bottom of the page, and then if you move on to the next page, it's going to add the number five. Accessory buildings or any portion thereof should not be converted into and are used as a dwelling, sleeping rooms, or a similar use, unless or until the owner requests and obtains the appropriate permit from the township. Any such permit shall not be issued until the zoning administrator has determined that the change complies with the applicable provisions of the ordinance and issues a land use permit. Staff notes in the current zoning ordinance, Section 5.7, accessory buildings and decks B1, states, for the purposes of this ordinance, decks shall be considered an accessory structure. Does this mean it would be counted as one of the three accessory dwellings? And then moving on, Section 6.5, lighting, will be amended as follows. I'm not going to read through those. And Section 6.5.3, exceptions, will be amended to add the following. And then moving down to the bottom of that page, the Lelandon County Housing Action Committee and Housing North have been working to develop new incentives and options for housing. An accessory dwelling unit can be, can provide additional living quarters that are independent of the primary dwelling units. ADUs can be an effective way to address housing challenges in our communities, and because of their size, cost less to construct. And we have provided a link to a webinar focused on the history of ADUs and how homeowners can create ADUs to help with housing needs. Cleveland Township recently adapted language allowing farm stays in the agricultural district. These lodging options could be rented out when seasonal workers are not present, or they could allow workers to stay year-round and send their kids to school here. Lelandon Township has also adapted zoning language regarding housing in its agricultural district. Elmwood Township is encouraged to consider adding ADU language to its zoning ordinance to assist with developing the much-needed housing Lelandon County needs for its workforce and families, as well as language regarding the use of housing in its agricultural areas. By allowing these additional housing opportunities, communities can help increase the inventory of available housing in a variety of options for families seeking places to rent and/or
All right. Next, we'll move on to commissioner comments. Mr. Donald, do you have anything to add or any questions?
No.
All right, Mr. Nixon?
Looking at Section 3.12, a document that they submitted, which is on page 27 or 37, it has existing language and the red language, which is the proposed language. I'm assuming under Section 3.12, there's also an A, but it's not shown there. It goes to B. I'm also assuming there must be somewhere in their zoning ordinance, a definition of what a dwelling is. If not, there should be. And I guess the only comment I would have is that Newland, prior to the dwelling being occupied, the applicant shall obtain a certificate of occupancy from the county. I think the assessment that was done by staff points out kind of the difficulty of enforcing that. I would recommend that they might put a timeline in there, that after X amount of days, a permit must be granted. That would permit the use of tents and RVs and family visitations where they might be using that vehicle or that other object for a short-term housing. I don't want to be reminded of the Lampoon's Christmas, where the motor vehicle drives up and is used, but thinking as I do around our county, there are several places and several young people who camp out, and I would send, that would address the staff's concern about using those for a temporary dwelling and extending the timeline, or at least specifying something for a timeline. Those would be my comments.
All right, Mr. Trumble?
I have none.
All right, Mr. Noonan?
Nothing further.
Mr. Miller?
Well, relative to the same 3.5, 3.2, the thing. I'm not sure that I understand why zoning ordinance would reference the fact that you need a building permit and that you need an occupancy permit before you occupy it. Since authority in statute, it does the construction is coming. So, it's kind of covering, round sort of the cover.
All right. Mr. Rush?
Nothing further to put, to put.
All right. Staff, anything further to add, or?
Nope.
Nope. All right.
I make a motion that we forward our staff comments and commissioner comments on to Elmwood Township.
All right, and your support? Support. All right. Mr. Noonan made the motion, Mr. Nixon supported, to forward the Elmwood Township text amendment on to the Elmwood Township Board. Is there any further discussion on that? All right, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Excellent. Next up, we have under new business, I don't know, three Zoom future meetings. I believe we just added this on to the agenda, I guess, to get a pulse for, from members on this mission here to feel like, you know, is this something that you feel like it's necessary to have Zoom available, where people are able to zoom in? Obviously, everything is recorded and is on the website, I understand, a few days after the meeting. But do we want the option for people to do it live, I guess? So, I don't know if anybody has any strong feeling one way or the other, or...
This is just to view it?
Right, but as you can tell, it takes time, and you have to make sure it's working properly. We've had difficulty with it before. So, we've had, we have, what, three other people on here tonight? At one, at one point? So, they can sit at home and watch it, get on and off when they want to, and not have to come to a meeting, but they can't participate. And that's the same for members. The only way members could participate by Zoom now, under the law, is if they're in the service. You can't participate anymore because you're ill or anything. So, Gail also has running a recording that is coming from that machine up there. And so, that is done for our minutes, because you can block it in the time period. If you want to go to a certain section, you can just go down there and find that section. And so, that is the one that gets uploaded and can be watched afterward. You know, you can do it in a day or a couple of days, just have, you have to move it into a different type of a video and then upload it.
County board or anybody else using Zoom?
The county board does for their meetings, and I believe there's special meetings. I don't recall on the committee meetings, but like Parks and Rec Commission and so forth, they're not using it. Brownfield and Land Bank, we're not using Zoom, neither is South Ways Council, so...
My opinion, I find it unnecessary.
All right.
Our township has discussed that very issue, and are continuing to use it only for convenience. Folks that leave our area and go elsewhere, have an opportunity to tune in and watch what happened. People who just can't make it out to a meeting physically, but want to know what's happening. And so, we've done it as a courtesy, and we'll probably continue to do so.
Right. And, I mean, we can do that. On the other hand, the other video could be uploaded probably the next day. They're not participating in any way, they're not taking action on it, there's, you know, everything you do here is going to move forward to another stage, to another meeting somewhere, so they still would have time to watch it before a township board meeting, for instance.
And unlike our township, I think you retain those videos for an extraordinary amount of time. And you just mentioned they're available.
Yeah.
But in a day or two after the meeting, that's, that's different with what we would be doing.
So, tonight, there are two systems that are running here.
And that's why I find it on the, I mean, if we couldn't watch it, or somebody couldn't watch it the next day, it's...
Yeah.
Or if they could participate, it'd be different. You're getting, it's doing two of the, basically the same thing.
Well, because the planning commission had acted in 2022, saying they wanted these meetings by Zoom, I wanted to see if you still wanted to continue it that way, or if you were okay with us doing it, the video that will be uploaded, and someone could watch it later on if they wanted to.
I think when we used it before, it was more of a convenience for people because of COVID.
Right.
I don't see that being the same concern now.
I guess, just my personal take, I feel like, yeah, it just puts more burden on staff, like, and obviously, it's just a matter of a day or two after it's online, and it's like, it might be a little inconvenient at the time for the meeting for the public, but at the same time, it's just as convenient to go back and watch it later, too. So, I guess that's my personal take. I'm good with moving on from it, but obviously, it's up to the rest of the members if they feel strongly one way or the other, I guess, but...
It does get stressful when things don't work either.
Do you want to motion on it, Trudy, or just...
If we just have a consensus, we'll put it in the minutes. So, if anyone ever asks, ADUs during your meetings, no, planning commission decided the video posted the day or two days after is adequate.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, next on, we're on to reports. Housing Action Committee, I guess, staff have anything to cover on that, or?
Sure, I'll cover. Commissioner Lotner's not here tonight, so I'll just let you know that there was a meeting in January, and we are working with Housing North. We have had some recent meetings, myself and some staff from Housing North, including Zach Hillier, who is now the housing-ready position person for Lelandon County. So, we've been meeting with a couple developers. We actually have another meeting coming up next week. People are asking, how do we get some assistance? We're interested in building some apartments or some workforce housing, but we don't know where to start, and so we're trying to help them through the process and see if there's anything we can do, you know, here, as far as resources and so forth, to get them going. So, there was discussion at the Housing Action Committee meeting on that, they held their organizational meeting, and they're working on some goals for this year, and just continuing to stay busy. They'll be meeting in March, they're meeting every other month now, so they'll meet in March.
Any questions, your staff on that front? All right. We're on to Parks and Recreation Committee, Mr. Noonan?
We did meet in January, but not a lot going on right now. The parks are pretty quiet. We wish there was more snow for grooming, for the cross-country skiing, but that's not out there. Not a whole lot to report right now.
Any questions for Mr. Noonan? All right, next on, we have report from many members, there weren't attendance in any township or village, just kind of a informal review of anything you want to update of this commission on, so, Mr. Donald, do you have anything that you can report on? Mr. Nixon?
Not at this time.
Not still?
There's lots going on inside. We have a dog park. We're expanding our parking a lot, we're hopefully going to be adding additional pickleball courts, but that's a lot of our discussion, budget process going on right now, with a tight budget, so.
Mr. Trumble? Mr. Noonan?
Pretty quiet in that part right now, but the village is kind of wild, but the township is quiet.
Mr. Miller?
Nothing.
Mr. Rush?
Just taking that four-part housing webinar that I'm finding interesting. Some double talk in it, so. It's just been the one part so far, so we'll see if the other parts get better, or if it continues to talk in circles. I'll fill you in when we're done.
Awesome, good, let's go over here and go. Nothing as far as, on my part, as far as so and township, obviously, I think the big one is the recycling site there moved from the river there over to Funtings, so hopefully that area will get cleaned up a little bit more, and it seems like everybody's happy that it's staying in Cedar and helping this wall business area there, so excited to have it moved there. On that, pretty quiet there, so. You have anything on the communication front?
Nope, just the one I read earlier.
All right, trade new stuff?
Yep.
Public comments, staff comments?
Did you have anything, Gil? No, I don't have anything further.
All right.
It's been a busy 2023 already, a little crazy.
Your legacy will stay that way, so. All right, any final commissioner comments? All right.
Quiet group tonight.
Yeah, well, I appreciate it, so actually, after the meeting quicker than I imagined, so, good with that. So, with that, no further comments, I'll call adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Steve. Thanks for keeping us moving.